Okay, the next order of business is use of town buildings and land policy. There's been a lot of discussion and a lot of emotional discussion, a lot of misinformation all across town about this particular agenda item. I just want to be sure that we are, we all look at this agenda item and understand that it is strictly to talk about a policy. We want to stay on the subject. The Board of Selectmen has very strict rules about treating each other with civility, and I'm going to expect we do that tonight. Wouldn't it be really nice at the end of this discussion if we're proud of our discussion instead of being ashamed of it? So with that, Mr. Town Manager, you have, I want to talk about your...
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we did is, upon request, develop a policy with regard to the town cosponsoring an event in town and the use of town buildings essentially without a charge, so by nonprofits. So through that process, we came up with a policy that is before you this evening. What it tries to do is memorialize what is an existing practice. The town cosponsors and has for a long time cosponsored events. For instance, the library has cosponsored events with 23 different groups. We recently, very successfully, through Joe and his staff, cosponsored the Chinese American Health Fair, which we had over 300 participants on a Saturday out of the senior center. So this formally establishes a process. The key to it is that any cosponsorship would have to require a certain alignment between the mission of our organization as the Town of Andover and the mission of the nonprofit. It provides me with the authority to decide whether or not, or the Town Manager to decide whether or not the town cosponsors, providing there's no monetary cost to the town. So, for instance, we're not outlaying any financial dollars beyond what might be participation from town staff and planning exercises. For instance, with Andover Cares, Joe's been actively involved in the planning for the event scheduled for October 7th. So that's the first part of the policy, cosponsorship. The second half is use of town buildings and land. And what we essentially did was cite the Town Charter, Section 10F, which says that the manager has authority to manage the use of town buildings. So the first part of the policy would essentially dictate the second. If you look the last, the second to last paragraph, this does not preclude organizations from certain costs that are normally associated with an event. So for instance, police fire details, that will continue to be paid by the primary sponsor. Are there times we've waived the fee, let's say the Old Town House for a nonprofit? We have. And we would still be able to do that under this policy. However, if there was 200 people there and required a police detail, that would be incumbent of the sponsor. So that's an overview. There's an event permit process that is run through my office. That would remain until further fact. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's a high-level summary of the intent.
Do you mind if I call on, I'm going to call on Beth for a second. Could you just tell us some of the kinds of events that the library cosponsors?
Would you like me to call up here?
Sure, sure, if you'd like to.
So we have three meeting rooms at the library, and part of our mission is to cooperate with town organizations on co-programming. And so we, the meeting rooms at the library are first for the library, second for town events, and then for individuals representing groups, but not programs. But we had like last year a thousand events that we had in our meeting rooms, not counting staff events, a thousand. We had to do it recently for our annual accounting. We've done, we've worked on, what we do is if people want to do a program, and we don't allow groups to do programs because we can't control them in the building unless we cosponsor it, then we decide whether we can handle a cosponsor of an event, and then we work with them to cosponsor, co-promote the event. So recently, we've done A Better Chance, Addison Gallery of Art, Andover Cultural Council, the Historical Society, Andover Tomorrow, Andover Trails, Chinese American, Essex Rowing Club, Foster's Pond, Greenscape's North Shore, Legal Women Voters, quota club, organizations like that where we've done co-programming with. We don't charge for any programs ever, so that takes things a little simpler for us. And we decide whether we can handle the program, is it within our mission, do we have the staffing resources to do it, is the room available?
So you decide on an individual basis for each one?
Yes, we have an overall policy, and we work within the trustees' policy, but we work within that, but there's a lot of negotiation for each event to figure out if it's doable for us. You can't just call and say, "I want to have a big dance festival at the library," and have it happen. It doesn't, we can't handle that.
Does the Board of Selectmen want to adopt a policy like this without interrupting with some of your...
The way I look upon that is the trustees do set policy for the library, and as long as we're basically in compliance with what the town is doing, then I don't know how Andrew and John see it, but I don't see that as a problem. I think we could work within that. We don't charge, so long as you don't make us charge, because we never have, we'd be fine. But I think that any differences, we could work out with the town.
Okay. Questions?
I do.
I have some questions, too.
Me, too. So, same on that side?
Yep.
Go that way.
Andrew, the, this policy's getting a lot of attention, and this is the middle of August, there's not a lot of opportunity for this to be promoted, for other nonprofits to be here to weigh in. I trust this is just a kind of a first draft, a first reading? There's no planned votes or anything along those lines?
So it's entirely up to the board whether or not they want to take a vote this evening, but to your point, this is certainly...
I think it's important to set that context so that people can relax and realize that this is just a first reading of a draft policy that you've put forward for the board to consider and ask questions.
He said it's up to the board to decide whether it's...
Understood, but I think it'd be important to set that context upfront, at least from my point of view, that a policy like this should be a first reading. The agenda says, references land use and building use by nonprofits, but your policy does not. I assume that was an oversight? There was nothing in your policy that mentioned nonprofits? It looks like it's, I went through it pretty thoroughly, and it looks like it just cosponsoring events and organizations, programs. It was, the intent was nonprofits. Okay, I just wanted to point that out to you.
And what do we mean by that? Does that mean somebody has to be a 501(c)(3) because that's an expense to go through to file, and you have to usually wait for the IRS to get back to you? And I don't know that that is something that, I mean, I can't speak for you, but do you want to be checking 501(c)(3) status?
We have in most instances, because we do, let's say the use of the park. If it's a for-profit endeavor, we do have a rental fee for the park. We do charge.
Who sets the rental fees for the park? I know that the Board of Selectmen by statute sets specific fees, like plumbing fees and like certain EMS fees, but who sets, just for clarification purposes, the rental fees associated with municipal buildings and lands?
It's my understanding it would be the board.
So the Board of Selectmen sets fees?
We, I think we...
Got you in there, Alex.
Yeah, we have approved them. Yeah, can you hear me? Sorry.
Sorry.
I think in the past, we've actually voted on the rates. I don't think we, so I don't know by definition if that means setting them, but we have voted on the rates for, you know, like Old Town Hall and things like that for for-profit groups.
Well, that's how it usually goes. We do a survey of peer communities. What I would do if we were to adjust the rates, recommend a rate to the board, and as Selectmen's Assembly sent the board within voting.
I will also say that since my tenure on the board, which is about 14 years, we've never had an issue with nonprofits using the facilities. I know that this is one that's been raised, but I know in historic purposes, it's always been a very, and probably just to camp on to what Beth said, it's always been a successful partnership between the town and the nonprofit, whether it's Boy Scouts, Chinese Americans, you know, different groups like the richer race, et cetera. We've had a history of, I think, coexisting, and it's been, you know, it's been a process that seems to have worked. I do think there's merit in, you know, putting that process in writing or clarifying it. And I do know that Andrew, as the Town Manager, does have the authority to do that. In fact, several years ago, one of the things the board did was to try to remove some of these overhead items from our agenda, whether it be block parties or some of these uses, and just have the Town Manager, trust the Town Manager to enforce and enact these requests so that it didn't have to come to the board. And we did that and said that we would take that approach unless there was an issue.
There were, yeah. Alex, there were specific things that we authorized the Town Manager, we delegated access to the Town Manager to approve specific requests, such as block parties and the use of the park, but the Town Manager is not authorized to deny requests. So I don't necessarily think that...
Right.
Yeah, I don't necessarily think that that factors into this directly, but that's just to bring you back, Alex.
Right. And I think it's worthwhile having a discussion of how the two integrate, meaning the existing process and this. For instance, I signed the approval letter for Clontown, which is, would fall into this. And I sign probably, especially this time of year, a half a dozen a week.
Yeah.
Whether it's a bake sale, or art in the park, or as long as they comply with all local regulations and get the approval of the appropriate departments and divisions.
Andrew, is the under 10F of the charter that was referenced in the information, how much of this policy is redundant with that? I mean, it seems pretty clear the Town Manager shall jurisdiction over the rental and use of town property except schools. So is it by custom or by charter that the Board of Selectmen get involved in fees, or is it truly under your discretion under the charter?
So under the charter, it's my discretion with regard to the use of the town buildings and land. With regard to the cosponsorship, the practice has been the town's made a decision what they decide to cosponsor. When I say the town, the manager, working with his or her department and division heads. There was a request to put together a policy, but to Alex's point, you know, the status quo has worked.
This is sort of memorializing what we're doing.
I mean, I'll say to Alex's point as well, this has worked pretty well, I think, probably for the last long period of time. So, you know, personally, I look at this policy and say, "We don't need it," you know, because, you know, the town can choose to cosponsor events at their discretion. I don't necessarily think that the, you know, the Town Manager should have to be involved in, you know, approving every cosponsored event, especially with 1,000 events at the library. So I don't quite think that we need a policy that memorializes what's being done today. And the second half of this policy regarding the use of town buildings and land, you know, this is just kind of reiterating the fact that the Town Manager may, you know, may waive facility rental fees, you know, and that's, whether that's the Town Manager's decision or the Board of Selectmen's decision, I mean, I know personally, if it would enable you more, you know, I'm happy with taking a vote that would authorize you to waive fees, but it's been working, you know? So I don't necessarily know why we even need a policy.
Yeah, what is, I guess, my question is the timing and the policy itself. What was the impetus for bringing a policy forward now? You have the authority under the charter to make decisions about town buildings, the under 10F, and it seems like that things we've done in the past, like bringing before the Board, I gather, fees and such, that this is saying the Town Manager will now have the discretion to cosponsor events and programs for missions and values aligned with town departments, right? Isn't that all this is doing?
That's all it is, providing the boards comfortable with that. I would request you take a vote, and we'll proceed.
But why do we even need it? You know, I mean, you know, why do we need to take a vote on something that's already in place? And this actually hamstrings the departments a little bit because, you know, it says the Town Manager's going to approve cosponsoring. You know, I don't think you want to approve 1,000 cosponsoring events. So it's working now, why do we, why do we need this?
There was a desire to have a policy discussion, so we put together some...
By whom to work from? By whom?
When the issue arose about Andover Cares and the board having a discussion about the town using or allowing nonprofits to use public spaces and/or cosponsor an event, that's a policy decision of the board. To sort of facilitate that discussion...
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again? Can you repeat what you just said?
So when the question came up with regard to the legality or the policy ramifications of two things, the town allowing nonprofits to use public space and the legality or the policy ramifications of the town cosponsoring an event.
Okay.
So anticipating a policy discussion this evening, what I did is draft a policy to facilitate a discussion. I think it's been a good discussion, and if the board is comfortable proceeding with the status quo, that's fine, but that's the direction I certainly need from the board.
Well, yeah, I don't think it's a matter of the policy, I think it's a matter of the discussion. I think the, there were questions, at least I raised two questions that are related to a very specific issue, which is the Andover Cares Festival. One was just a legal question, which Tom Erbelis has answered. Does it in any way violate the anti-aid amendment by the state? We've had prior precedent where that's, the anti-aid amendment has been cited about limitations of the town providing aid, which is broadly defined, to nonprofits. To the point, shortly after I got elected, I tried to have the town donate my stipend directly to a charity. That was denied based on the state, the anti-aid amendment. A recent request from a nonprofit for a donation was denied on the basis of the anti-aid amendment. So all I was doing is asking the question, which has now been answered, which is that based on the criteria that has been cited in the legal opinion, we are allowed to use public resources for that reason. So the secondary point of that is the issue of equity and fairness, to make sure that from a, across the board, you know, we all support the good work that all our nonprofits do, including Andover Cares. We want to make sure that everybody has fair access to the same properties and the same terms as best we can. And when I look at your policy here, I mean, the policy itself actually started to raise questions because it says, "The Town Manager wants to have the discretion to cosponsor events with missions and values aligned with town departments." Now, I could look at any one of our sports leagues, Little League, or soccer, others, say that their missions clearly align with DCS or youth services. Why wouldn't we cosponsor them and give them either free or reduced-rate fields? It's perfectly in line with what we're doing.
We have, we have an existing policy that dictates the fees for the use of fields by...
Understood, but what I'm trying to point at is the discrepancies between are some nonprofits going to have it free, are some going to pay for it? Should there be some judgment here as to how do we align that so it's fair to everybody? Now that we know the parameters for what's legal, we certainly, in my view, I think we should make it as inexpensive as possible for nonprofits to operate in our town. I don't think we should charge.
The question, I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm a delay or not.
Go ahead, Alex.
I go back to the point that Dan made, and that is, do we really need this because we're able to operate today over many years, thousands of, you know, thousands of uses? You know, should we just keep it as operating now and leave it on Andrew's plate and the Town Manager?
I will say, I am very much comfortable with the board taking no action on this and maintaining the status quo.
Well, I'd like to actually see...
Perhaps something that's worked.
I'd actually like to see the data, I'd like to see a review to see if there's areas where we can actually do better. I know, for example, I've got friends that are on the end of a Little League board that would love to come here and talk to you about the user fees they pay, the fact that they have to provide maintenance on certain fields out of their own expense, and then it shoes up their budget.
And those were, those were, I mean, I think we'd all love to do it at no charge, but those were all negotiated, whether it be the new DeAirmen's field as part of the contribution or the other fields. Those are kind of separate agreements. Now, if you want to break apart those agreements, that's, I think, a separate topic than we're talking about here.
Which is, which is exactly what I'm saying.
In a way, because of the fact that they're regular uses. I think, you know, the ones we're talking about here are maybe once a year or so, and they don't tie up...
It's regular events for us on time.
There's an enormous difference between a one-day event and use of the fields, four and five games a day for the whole year.
I think there's nonprofits that would disagree with that.
Okay, you can have your opinion. But that's, I mean, there is a huge difference there with the, with the maintenance of fields on an entire summer.
But Andrew's policy is saying that if the mission and values of the organization coincide with the mission and values of town departments, that we should be cosponsoring, which means lower reduced fees. I think you could easily make that argument for the sports leagues.
I would, again, I would, Dan, I think, made a very good point here, and Andrew has, you know, weighed in on it, that why not just leave things as they are right now? And if we seem, if we have issues, then usually that's when you develop a policy, right? When there's something that, there's an issue with it. But right now, it seems that we've got a, we've got a system that's working. I trust the Town Manager with a judgment on these things.
Yeah, I agree.
Before we finish up, I have a couple of things I'd like to say. First of all, I'd like to say it's clear that the reason we're talking about this today is because Bob raised the issue with the Andover Cares at the last meeting and wanted a legal determination, which we have, which raised the discussion. So that's how we got here today. And Andover Cares is coming up, and Bob pushed for it to be done quickly, so we started talking about it, and I don't think there's any question that that's how we got here.
We're not having that discussion, though, are we? We're not having a discussion about Andover Cares and the use, we're having a discussion about a policy, a broad-based policy.
Right, because you wanted to address the issue. But you want to treat Andover Cares the same as everyone else, correct?
No, that's not true.
You want to treat them differently?
I want to have a policy that is fair. If we're going to allow, for example, Andover Cares to utilize the youth center for a concert or parts of it, then what happens to the next nonprofit that comes along? Is this going to be a case-by-case decision?
Well, that's what I just said. You want to treat everyone the same.
I want it to be fair and equitable, yes.
And it should be the same for everyone.
That's right.
The other thing, the other question that I have with my insurance lawyer hat on is, there's nothing in this policy about limiting liability of the town or requiring insurance. We don't want to be in a situation where we, the town has limited liability under law, but that doesn't mean that there wouldn't be, say, damage to the property by the sponsoring organization that we'd then be responsible for.
It's due to the permit process.
Yeah, it's required by the...
Yeah, it's not stated here, but it's due to the permit.
So we need to make sure that that's true with regard to sponsorship situations, in addition to, I'm sure it's part of the rental, and I've looked at some of the paperwork with regard to that. So that's something that we need to make sure is treated accordingly so that we can protect ourselves and make them protect themselves. We don't want to be in a situation like the field in Lawrence.
I'm sorry, isn't that in the policy? It says the town cosponsorship does not limit liability to organizations.
The policy we have today, when we...
When we issue a permit, they're required to show proof of insurance.
And the town has to be a, has to be named as a co-insurer.
As an additional insurer.
That's all taken care of.
Andrew, just to get back to the liability question, isn't that in here? You have town cosponsorship does not limit liability to organizations.
That's actually the other way. What he's saying is because the town is limited by state law as to what liability we can have, that it doesn't impact on the sponsor's liability. Like, we don't give them extra protection.
Yeah. If this does apply to nonprofits as well, no, I, this, obviously, we're not even clear if we're going to even vote on a policy, but if it does relate to nonprofits, I assume there should be some wording that will satisfy the anti-aid amendment, not violate the anti-aid amendment. Wouldn't that be part of any policy that related to nonprofits, right?
I mean, yeah, I mean, you don't necessarily need to put in your policy, "Don't break the law." You know, I mean, that should be...
There's a lot of things you don't have to...
Pretty evident. But, I mean, personally, I don't think we need the policy. And before, instead of continuing to delve into the content of the proposed policy, I'd like to bring it up and say that I don't think we need the policy and move on. I mean, it's, the process has worked. The Town Manager is authorized by charter because he controls the buildings. Town Manager acknowledges that the Board of Selectmen sets the fees associated with facility usage, or at least that's, you know, what it appears to be. You know, personally, I think it would be nice to see a comprehensive list of all the fees, you know, and then we can evaluate if we think that there's an equitability problem.
Well, that was the point of this, is to have the open discussion, to look at the nonprofits, how we work across the board, and see if there's opportunities to improve how we work with nonprofits and make it fair across the board. Just because we have old practices doesn't mean they're right and they're fair. And believe me, there are nonprofit sports leagues that are going to come in here and explain to you how they felt they have not been treated fairly and have been threatened with an increase in fees going forward. So I think that needs to be put forward. And Andrew, I think you need to clarify something for the public here. Has anyone in this board ever recommended or proposed that we discontinued the use of town property for nonprofits?
No. The initial question was related to Andover Cares.
That's right. So no one in this board has said or recommended the discontinuation of use of town property for nonprofits, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
That's exactly what I, what I said when I said there was a lot of misinformation out there.
Well, misinformation appears to be coming from you because you're being quoted as saying exactly that phrase.
You're getting your bad mood again, so...
I'm not in my bad mood, I'm just stating a fact.
So in order to move the board forward, can we...
I need to discuss this with my buddy here. You have to understand that when things happen that other people say, doesn't make them true, okay?
Oh, so you're saying that you didn't say the things that you were quoted on by several other people? They misquoted you.
Can I actually, can I, can we go back to the business of the board?
So the Andona group and Andrea Zane, the town employee, misquoted you? Just to set the record straight.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm just responding to the chairman, not Dan, so...
Well, you brought up, you brought up. This whole thing was brought up by you, so...
Can we bring it back to Alex? I mean, Alex, I mean, what I'm here, what I can, kind of think I heard from you, and please correct me if I'm wrong, you don't appear to feel that this policy is necessary? Alex?
Based on past practice, and I'm trying to, you know, I thought about this long and hard as far as have we had issues in the past? And I've been involved personally in Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts and a lot of leagues. I was involved in the baseball many years, the girl softball many years. So I've been, you know, I've touched it from both sides, and I think it's been handled well. So Dan, I, you know, I think things are working fine, and I'm not saying there's opportunities, there's never, there's always opportunity for improvement, but we do so many things today with our nonprofits, you know, it's overwhelmingly successful that I don't, I think, I just don't think, see that this is going to be a productive output right now. And I don't know if it's, you know, a solution, but looking for a problem, or, you know, we can narrow it down to specific things. But I think, and I've read it, that I would continue the practice as is. That's my opinion.
Okay, great. Laura, what's your opinion on it?
As long as we have some sort of a permit that is signed by these organizations so that we cover all of the standard issues that we would in a rental, then I'm fine with continuing without any additional policy.
Well, what's your opinion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chairman, oh, I'm sorry, not the vice chairman. The, I would, I think that it would be helpful to see an analysis done for the board, no rush, but I would put it out there, and I think we should give any nonprofit group that has an opportunity, whether it be Little League or others that want to come in and talk about their arrangement with the town, we should do that. And I think as a general policy, in light of, you know, the ruling we've had on the anti-aid amendment, I think we ought to think more broadly about how to alleviate fees and reduce fees and reduce the burden on nonprofits instead of just staying on autopilot, doing what we've always done.
So no on the policy, and I assume you're probably good with it?
Listen, I have, I thought right from the beginning that this probably was working just fine. It was all brought up because of the Andover Cares challenge, and when Mr. Erbelis's decision or opinion came out, it was, it was certainly brought some questions to the foreground where if everybody had to be treated equally, then it just didn't affect Andover Cares, which is what you were replying on, but it affected all of the other nonprofits. And the use of buildings and land for nonprofits was now the discussion, not just one, because your opinion said it, everybody had to be equal.
May I ask what you mean by that, though? Can you explain what you just said, though? Because I don't follow what you just said. Based on the town council's opinion...
Well, he gave two opinions.
Okay.
One was verbal, which you didn't accept, and you asked...
I never got a verbal opinion. Who got the verbal opinion? You referenced that in an email to your...
I think...
So who received a verbal legal opinion from Town Council?
The Town Manager did, and then I did.
I did, and my only question to Tom was, under the law, are we able to cosponsor? And the answer was yes.
And how was that shared? You shared with the board that it's legal to cosponsor, but as far as the use of the building and the anti-aid amendment, did you verbally, did you share the verbal opinion on that?
No.
You did not, correct?
It was particular to cosponsoring.
That's exactly right. Right? So we didn't know until Tuesday, when we got... So, we didn't know until, until Tuesday, when we got written legal opinion, correct?
I have no idea what you knew or didn't know, but I can tell you that I brought forth this discussion because everyone had to be, had to be treated equally according to, to our town council. And in doing so, it brought in all of the other, all of the other possibilities.
And how would that affect it if we're allowing Andover Cares, which you should be recusing yourself from, I might add, but if we should be allowing Andover Cares to utilize that property at no charge, how does that hurt all the nonprofits? In fact, it would help them. If you have to treat everyone the same and fairly, what adverse effect could that possibly have?
Well, if, if it was, if the, if the decision of this Board was not to do it...
And what gave you the idea, the decision this Board would be to vote against nonprofits? What possible evidence or, or, did you have that?
I have no idea, Bob. You were challenging this at the time.
Oh, you just speculated?
No, 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 I speculated. Let me move on with the business of the Board.
Yeah, he's, he's making assumptions that are absolutely absurd, again.
So, Andrew, as a next step, could, as a next step, could we, could you just prepare a summary of the different fees associated with the use of public land and just, and share that with the Board?
Sure. They haven't been updated in a long time, so it's probably a good exercise to go through.
Take a look at them and...
And we'll do a survey amongst other communities.
Yeah, and it would be interesting as well, just to confirm that, confirm, I'll say, that it is the Board of Selectmen that is authorized, because I know that there are specific fees that were authorized by statute to set. I don't know if it's actually town property, so I would like to just to solidify and to confirm that it is the Board of Selectmen or the town manager that is authorized to set these.
That's a good idea.
There are dozens and dozens of people here who came out for this. I'm inclined to ask a few of the people to speak if they would like to. I think you've heard the discussion. If anybody would like to speak beyond that, I'd be happy to entertain just a couple, if you don't mind. Yes.
This is turning out well.
No, I know, I just, it's just, in fairness to people who've come out for this, I don't know who's for or against or whatever, but I think it's fair.
Good evening. Paul Wurkely, Clements, over at 119 Chestnut Street. As many of you know, I served on the school committee, and I was, had clown for a number of years, ran Clown Town, which was so much fun. And I'm very proud of that, I didn't want my clown suit tonight, but I, I guess I just want to say, first of all, I think that there's no policy needed, but if you're going to continue a discussion about fees, I'd just like to remind the Board of Selectmen, I agree with what Mr. Salafia said, which is, I think from a practical standpoint, conceivably, you have to understand, my son plays baseball, that it's, costs a lot more money to maintain a field when you're playing on fields every day than it does say to run Clown Town for a day. That's just practical common sense. But before you start looking at the fees and deciding that because Andover Cares is doing something for free, all nonprofits should get things for free, I would recommend that you be mindful of the budget process, because there are thousands of parents in town that are paying, I just paid my sports fees for my kids that are going to high school. I just spent $200 in school supplies, crayons, pencils, and those are all things that aren't covered in the budget. And if we're going to start not charging fees to nonprofits, and Clown Town is still near and dear to my heart, the stuff that we do, I think that you, in fairness, have to look at the budget process and think of all those other fees. So, before you make some sweeping change, just because of Andover Cares, be mindful that the budget's coming up, because we fight over $100,000 for three months to balance the budget, and it adds up, so thank you.
Yes, Bobby, you were, you were...
Paul Wurkely, Chestnut Street. I'd just like to remind the Board that many of the activities that we, that are indirectly being discussed here, Clown Town, Arts of the Park, Andover Day and all those, are, are activities that make a very positive contribution to the town of Andover, and I think we should all continue to encourage them, not discourage them. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else?
Yeah, sorry. Jennifer Sloan, I'm the president of Andona, 20th and 3rd Circle, and I just want to say I do feel encouraged by the discussion tonight, and I do appreciate the fact that people are looking at the fees and looking at who's been charged and who hasn't been charged and what policy should be in the future, and, you know, should it be equitable and fair